Safe streets, vibrant neighborhoods, successful business and commerce. These are things that make a healthy community. We are a diverse community, rural, suburban, urban. A multitude of languages and ethnicities, ages and experiences. We are a collaborative community. Public-private partnerships make us a model community that others want to follow. It is what makes us unique. It is what makes us strong. The employees of Kent County reflect our diversity and seek to serve our communities.
People in this county, in this area, we wrap our arms around each other. We come together to collaborate, to solve problems. We're all working for the good of the whole. And I think that's wonderful. And you can see it. You can see it as you drive around Kent County.
Our impact starts the day a baby is born and a birth certificate is issued. To protecting children from deadly diseases through vaccination, to the public safety and justice provided by law enforcement and the courts, to offering veterans services and caring for the elderly. Every day, we work to keep our communities robust.
I think if you are somebody who is interested in serving your community, in building a strong knowledge base and a good group of people to work with, then the county is one of your best employment opportunities out there. It's been completely rewarding in every way I could possibly explain for 26 years. And I feel like I grow every single day still today.
Leading these dedicated employees are 19-member Board of Commissioners and our county Administrator Controller, along with our elected officials and appointed department directors, placing emphasis on civic involvement, quality housing, vibrant neighborhoods, and strong solid infrastructure to allow businesses to thrive. Professional, dedicated, collaborative, and innovative.
Behind the scenes collaboration between foundations, charitable organizations, nonprofits, for-profit businesses, public sector demonstrated through the county, the city of Grand Rapids, the townships, all the cities and the villages in our area. If we don't come together, then we will not have the strength that we have today. And I only hope to build upon that.
Our aim is to make our communities the best they can be. We are involved in exciting development projects, sustainable recycling programs, and creative progressive prevention programming. We partner with elected officials impacting policy ideas that become great achievements. We seek opportunities to reach out into the community and offer our services to help our residents make Kent County thrive.
Our relationship is solid, both from a staff standpoint at the county level as well as the Board of Commissioners. And they understand what we do and the benefits that we can do for the community. And vice versa, we couldn't do what we do without the help of Kent County.
While most of us are busy running our lives, Kent County's elected officials, Administrator Controller, and over 1,600 employees are serving the communities where we live our lives, so we can all have a place we are proud to call home. Kent County, its life well-run.
Good morning. We have a rowdy bunch today. I love it. If everybody could make their way to their seats, we'll get started. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the Kent County Board of Commissioners for November 21st. I'm going to call the meeting to order. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioners Vonck.
Here.
Antor.
Here.
Morgan.
Here.
Jones.
Here.
Vice Chair Steck.
Here.
Commissioners Ponstein.
Here.
Voorhees.
Present.
Coleman.
Here.
Breevey.
Here.
Salfeld.
Here.
Sparks.
Present.
Melton.
Present.
Hennessy.
Here.
Talan.
Here.
Volkowski.
Present.
Womack.
Here.
Wooden.
Here.
Skaggs.
Here.
Chair Bolter.
Here.
Madam Chair, you have 19 members present, zero absent. You have a quorum.
Wonderful. On to item three, invocation. I'll call Commissioner Wooden.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Before I get started, I will be bringing up Rabbi Michael Shattuck of Temple Emmanuel, another great house of worship within my district. But before I do, I just hope that you'll join me in a moment of silence and silent prayer for our sheriff, Michelle LaJoie Young, given last week's tragedy. You know, in moments like this, turning to faith is about most important. So I hope you'll join me. Thank you. As I mentioned, I'd like to bring up Rabbi Michael Shattuck of Temple Emmanuel to lead us in prayer. Thank you very much.
With gratitude and appreciation, we give thanks for the gifts that flow into our lives day by day, a river of divine blessing. For you are the well of abundance, the source of beauty, a foundation of courage, and the crown of dreams. You are the well of energy, the source of faith, a foundation of grace, and the crown of hope. You are the well of insight, the source of justice, a foundation of kindness, and the crown of love. You are the well of mercy, the source of nourishment, the fountain of our lives, and the crown of peace. You are the well of quiet, the source of righteousness, a foundation of strength, and the crown of truth. For you are the well of understanding, the source of vitality, a foundation of wonder, and the crown of years. All of us this morning, with gratitude and appreciation, we give thanks. Let us all give thanks for the gifts we have that flow into our lives day by day. These are a river of divine blessing. Let us say together, amen.
Amen. Amen. Our allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We are on to item five, Special Order of Business, Veteran of the Year. Today, we are recognizing United States Veterans Council of Kent County Commander Eric Nelson. And I would call on Commissioner Betsy Melton for the presentation. Okay, go ahead. Good morning.
Good morning. I'm Eric Nelson, the newly-minted commander of the Kent County United Veterans Council of Kent County. I'd like to introduce a veteran who was selected this year to represent all veterans that go over and above the call of duty on a regular basis. He is a Navy veteran, honorably discharged after six years of service to his country. He grew up in a family where God, country, and family were emphasized, with many families that served our country. While serving in the Navy, he worked as part of the Deck Force, running one of the two 86-ton cranes for loading and unloading marine tankers, equipment, and several 100-foot boats. He also served aboard the USS Donner, protecting the United States and in the Caribbean seas. After being discharged in 1960, he continued to serve veterans in the American Veterans Post 23, working with Kent County Veteran Services, promoting civics, history, and citizenship understanding to students. Volunteering every Monday for six hours at the Battle Creek VA Medical Center since 2016, and still doing that today. He has served in many different capacities for the AMVETS, as a commander, vice commander, trustee, and many more positions at the local, state, and national level. Our 2020 Veteran of the Year continues to serve veterans on a daily basis through his continued involvement in veteran affairs. It is my honor to announce the 2020 Veteran of the Year for Kent County, Bob Green. Amen. Amen. Thank you. You're welcome. Thank you.
I think Commissioner Melton wanted to give you a presentation as well. I think Commissioner Melton wanted to give you a presentation as well. I have to say, and I don't mean to turn my back to all of you, but I am actually going to address this group behind me. Of all of the things that I have had opportunity to do in the last three years, far and above, without any exceptions, this is my brand, this honor, this is my most important, the next thing I want to say, what we have done for many, for our family, and for all of us who are here. There are no words ever that can thank you enough. So we're going to start with that, and now we'll get to you. Whereas our nation sets aside November 11th every year to honor and recognize veterans who have served in our nation's armed forces. And whereas the United Veterans Council of Kent County annually selects a Veteran of the Year and gives this veteran special recognition at the council's annual banquet. And whereas the 2019 Veteran of the Year is Bob G. Green, a Navy veteran who served from 1960 to 1966. And whereas Bob Green, Michigan AMVETS commander, has established a partnership with Hospice of Michigan to honor and recognize veterans from World War II, Korea, and Vietnam by participating in special ceremonies, presenting them with certificates of recognition and flag pins. And whereas Bob Green volunteers every Monday morning for six hours at the Battle Creek VA Medical Center. And whereas Bob Green promotes civics, history, and citizenship understanding to students in K through 12 grades through the AMVETS National Americanism programs, and makes visits to youth classrooms and ROTC programs. And whereas having sponsored several presentations from community nonprofit organizations in the Grand Rapids, to the Grand Rapids Knights of the Round Table, Bob Green has promoted mutual understanding and support. And he was formally presented to the Knights of the Round Table twice. And whereas whether in a nursing home, assisted living, or community setting, Bob Green has stood alongside his fellow veterans by saying, "Thank you for your sacrifice and service," and has always been committed to never abandoning his fellow veteran. Now therefore, be it resolved that Board Chair Mandy Bolter and Commissioner Betsy Melton, on behalf of the Kent County Board of Commissioners, do hereby congratulate Bob G. Green, a member of the AMVETS and American Legion Post Number 137 in Newcastle, Indiana, for being the 2019 Veteran of the Year, thanking him for his many years of service to the military and veteran service members of our community. One more little thing to share. I came across this, and I just think it's so apropos. Douglas MacArthur said once, "The soldier above all others prays for peace, for it is the soldier who must suffer and bear the deepest wounds and scars of war." Thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you all of you so much. Thank you, Commissioner Melton and Mr. Green. You're a pretty special guy, so we'd love to hear from you.
Well, you know, I'd just like to say something. I really appreciate this. And I know there's a lot of other veterans out there probably, you know, deserve it. And I tell you what, I appreciate that they've selected me, and it's been an honor to accept the award that I've got. And I tell you what, I want to try to do a very good job this year and be the veteran you expect me to be. So thank you very much.
Thank you so much for everything. Oh, man, that's hard to follow in boring county business.
I move a adjournment.
Yeah, yeah. Let's have cake. All right. Thank you again. Thank you so much for all your attendance and all your service, and we really appreciate it. That's probably one of our favorite presentations of the year, so thank you so much. On to item six, public comment related to our current agenda. Is there any public comment today? All right, seeing none, we are on to items...
Oh, one.
Oh, I'm sorry. Come on up. Good morning. Welcome to the Kent County Commission.
You're right, Madam Chair. That is a tough act to follow. Good morning. I'm Nancy Nielsen, 14130 Keller Northeast at Spencer Township and Cedar Springs mailing address. I am the chair of the Kent County Senior Millage Committee, a position I have held since the first millage dollar was collected back in 1999. Obviously, I am here this morning to enlist your support for Resolution Number 11-21-19-109, which is on your agenda. And thank you very much in advance for approving it. For those of you who were here earlier this month as part of the Finance and Fiscal Resources Committee, my remarks will be fairly redundant, but we're at a pretty important point here 20 years since the millage was passed. And I really want to take a few minutes to orient all of you as to who we are and who is doing this work on behalf of you and all the residents of Kent County. We've come a long way in 20 years. Back in 2000, I stood here, in 1999, I stood here and asked for your support for $3.5 million in village services for the year 2000. I stand here today. We have gone over another million, and I'm asking for your support for over $12 million for 2020. We've come a long way, folks, in 20 years. I would like to acknowledge the committee who does this work. They give up a chunk of their fall in order to do this, and I'd like you to know a little more about who we are. There are nine of us. Besides myself, our Vice Chair, Dr. Jim Byrne, retired medical director from Priority Health, Art Tanis, retired from the Sheriff's Department and from your group, Sue Carson, a retired social worker from Life EMS, and Richard Clanton, our newest member, who was a retired mayor of Kentwood, in addition to any other number of things on his resume. Those five of us are all retired senior citizens ourselves. In addition, we have county participation in persons of three commissioners, Commissioner Hennessy, Commissioner Steck, Commissioner Matt Coleman, and Assistant Administrator Matthew Van Zetten, who comprise our committee. I would also just like to single out some distinguished alumni of our committee who are here. Harold Voorhees, Diane Jones, and Wayman Brett have all served on our committee. And last year, we were really pleased when Chair Bolter took the time to spend a whole day to just sit in with us as part of our proceedings, which we appreciate very much. We take a chunk of October to get this work done. Prior to meeting with all the providers, we pour through what has to be 25 pounds in a five-inch binder of proposals that we spend hours on prior to meeting with all the providers. We take, it's three and a half long days in the middle of October, and invariably, those three days are the three most beautiful days of the fall season. It never fails. Thankfully, we are in a room now that has beautiful windows, so we can at least look out. I'd like to extend kudos to the staff of the Area Agency on Aging of Western Michigan. This is the organization that the county has chosen to contract with to administer the millage, and it has been a superb partnership over these 20 years. The staff at the AAA are among the most caring, competent, professional employees I've ever had the privilege of working with. And over the course of my career, I have staffed or served on any number of committees. And this is just the most, we just have a chemistry. We have for 20 years, whoever the personnel are. We work as a team with the staff. I think we develop a real respect for one another, and I've just never seen such a well-oiled machine functioning together, spending our dollars, and having a good time doing it too. So thank you for hearing me out, and I look forward to your approval of our recommendations. Thank you.
Thank you so much, and I can attest, you run a tight ship over there. So good work, and appreciate the board and the staff and all that you do, and it's such important work. And I know a lot of us participate, and a lot of us do meals on wheels, and it's just amazing the resources we have in this community for our seniors. So thank you so much. Any other public comment today regarding the current agenda? All right, seeing none, we are on to item seven, Consent Agenda, and I'll call Commissioner Wooden.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move adoption of the consent agenda for today's date, November 21st, 2019.
Moved by Commissioner Wooden, support by Commissioner Breevey. Questions or comments? All right, seeing none. This is a roll call. Madam Clerk, please call the roll. Thank you, Madam Chair. On the motion to adopt the consent agenda, Commissioners Vonck.
Yes.
Antor.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Vice Chair Steck.
Yes.
Commissioners Ponstein.
Yes.
Voorhees.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
Breevey.
Yes.
Salfeld.
Yes.
Sparks.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
Talan.
Yes.
Volkowski.
Yes.
Womack.
Yes.
Wooden.
Yes.
Skaggs.
Yes.
Chair Bolter.
Yes.
Madam Chair, you have 19 yays, zero nays. The motion passes. The consent agenda is adopted. Thank you, Madam Clerk. We're on to item eight, Resolutions, and I'll call Commissioner Morgan for Resolution A.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to move Resolution 107, 107. It's from the Administrator's Office, and it's the 2020 general appropriation.
Support. Moved by Commissioner Morgan, support by Commissioner Jones. Questions or comments? Commissioner Jones.
Well, as Chair of the Finance Committee, again, I'd like to thank everyone who participated in this, starting with our Administrator, starting with our Fiscal Services, staff team, every staff member. It is an incredibly lengthy process. I'd like to thank the commissioners here who participated in it with the work groups. We had a bit of a different process this year. I think it added the additional time we needed to thoroughly review this, and I'm very pleased with the end result. So thank you, everyone.
Any other questions or comments? Commissioner Antor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. She left one person out, and that would be herself. Commissioner Jones, she did some things a little differently this year. I think all the changes were great, helped expedite, and helped, you know, the clarity of these meetings was better because we kept things moving. They were long, but they were very efficient, and I wanted to thank her for that.
Commissioner Steck.
Thank you, Chair Bolter. I do want to acknowledge Chair, or Financial Chair Jones, as the Chair of the Legislative Committee and those of us that sit on the Legislative Committee. We sometimes watch what goes on over there, wondering. And your new process has really allowed us to engage. And so by the time it comes to us here, we've been involved, and we've had the opportunity to participate, and so it truly is a full-board process. So thank you for that.
Great. Commissioner Sparks.
As a newer Commissioner, I'd like to say thank you for making that a lot easier. From what I understand, having the external meetings was very helpful, and thank you for helping me through my illness and making sure I stayed abreast of things. Appreciate it.
Any other question? Commissioner Wooden.
Thank you, Chair. I just want to echo the previous comments in thanking our Chair, Giant, our Chair of the Finance and Fiscal Resources Committee, Diane Jones, and staff, and the entire leadership team on the Commission for this process. I was very thankful for it, especially the change in having the longer work session after a committee so we can delve deeply into the details. As a newer Commissioner, I enjoyed that very much. I have every intention of voting for this budget. Just like I pointed in the Finance Committee, I do want to raise one long-term concern that I hope that we can just take attention to. You know, in reviewing the increase in staffing and looking at the increase that we've seen in our road patrol budget, I did find that this budget has now increased about 30% over the last six years. And while I perfectly understand the need for that service, you know, when I see that 70% of it comes from our general fund, and on top of that, the continual increase in population that's served by it, I just hope that we can have a longer-term discussion about how we can fund this necessary service in a way that is sustainable, fair, equitable, to ensure that we can also continue to serve the other needs, the varied needs that exist in this county and are arising in this county, from lead to PFOS and beyond. Just noted again, I have every intention of voting for this budget. I just wanted to note that for longer-term discussions. Thank you.
Commissioner Ponstein.
Thank you, Chair Bolter. I want to thank Wayman and the staff for all the work that you did on this. Once again, it's a balanced budget. There are forms of government that don't do balanced budgets. Is it everything we needed or wanted? I mean, I wish I had a magic wand where I could just pile the money to address everything. But we are limited to what, you know, we do and what we spend it on. I think it's fair in the way we've done it, and, you know, the next step is probably the most difficult part. We just allocate the money. Staff that we have will be in charge of making sure that those dollars are used efficiently and in the best way we can, and give the taxpayers everything that we can. And I appreciate what the staff does after this process is done. So thank you.
Any other questions or comments? All right, seeing none, this is a roll call vote. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
On the motion to adopt Resolution 112119107, Commissioners Vonck.
Yes.
Antor.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Vice Chair Steck.
Yes.
Commissioners Ponstein.
Yes.
Voorhees.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
Breevey.
Yes.
Salfeld.
Yes.
Sparks.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
Talan.
Yes.
Volkowski.
Yes.
Womack.
Yes.
Wooden.
Yes.
Skaggs.
Yes.
Chair Bolter.
Yes.
Madam Chair, you have 19 yays, zero nays. The motion passes. Resolution 112119107 is adopted.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We are on to item 8B, and I'll call on Commissioner Breevey.
Thank you, Chair Bolter. I would like to move Resolution 112119108, the Michigan Indigent Defense Commission Grants from the Administration's Office.
Moved by Commissioner Breevey. Support by Commissioner Sparks. Questions or comments? All right, seeing none, this is a roll call. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
On the motion to adopt 112119108, Commissioners Vonck.
Yes.
Antor.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
Voor, Jones.
Yes.
Vice Chair Steck.
Yes.
Commissioners Ponstein.
Yes.
Voorhees.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
Breevey.
Yes.
Salfeld.
Yes.
Sparks.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
Talan.
Yes.
Volkowski.
Yes.
Womack.
Yes.
Wooden.
Yes.
Skaggs.
Yes.
Chair Bolter.
Yes.
Madam Chair, you have 19 yays, zero nays. The motion passes. Resolution 112119107 is adopted.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We're on to the next back page of our agenda, item 8C, and I'll call on Commissioner Wooden.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move adoption of Resolution 109 of today's date, the senior millage allocations for fiscal year 2020. It comes through us from the Administrator's Office.
Support.
Support.
Moved by Commissioner Wooden, support by Commissioner Womack. Questions or comments? Commissioner Steck.
Thank you, Chair Bolter. I just want to underscore the comments made in public, comment by our Chair Nancy. Thank you for those. And assure my colleagues that this process is one that involves a very thorough vetting of these applications, and we take very diligent care to assure that the millage funds that are within our jurisdiction are properly applied, are appropriately spent, and that we are putting the right bang for our buck. So I think it is a great model for how we can apply public funds, match them with private efforts, and accomplish a great good throughout our community. So I fully endorse and intend to support this.
Thank you, Commissioner Steck. Commissioner Hennessy.
Thank you. Commissioner Steck has said it all, and I do appreciate the long-term work, the 20-years work of Nancy Nielsen in leading this process, and that it is an evolving process and will, you know, involve looking at how we, in the next year, how we do our work and seeing if we are following the best practices. And I have every confidence that we are doing really close examination of the services and the delivery of the services through our staff, through our agencies. And if you doubt that, ask Commissioner Volkowski over here, how we grill him.
and I saw a means in which spending tax dollars really got the purview and the vetting and scrutiny that we should have for people who work hard for their tax dollars. And so, to Nancy and all the crew, keep up the good work. Thank you very much for your work.
Commissioner Coleman.
Thank you, Madam Chair. A lot of constituents of mine might wonder if government works well, and I think today we have an agenda full of items showing government working really well. I think pinnacle of that is the Senior Milage Committee, and just my thanks and appreciation to everyone involved and all the work that goes in in advance and behind the scenes. So, thanks so much.
Commissioner Bolkowski.
Thank you, Chair. I just need to continue to note my abstaining from this matter. As Commissioner Hennessy alluded to, my employer disability advocates receives an allocation as part of this, so I am precluded from saying good things about staff, our staff, as well as area agency on aging staff. And, yeah, the hard work that happens in October happens all throughout the year. And so, not only are we providers grilled in October, we are checked into throughout the year and making sure our contracts are doing what we said we are. So, that being said, I won't say anything. So, abstain.
This is your version of absten, abstention?
Yes.
Tremendous restraint. Down to two minutes. Commissioner Tallon.
Thank you, Chair. Since it hasn't been mentioned, I just want to quickly acknowledge the work of our former colleague, former Commissioner Artanis, who's part of this committee and here today. Thank you, Art.
Any other questions or comments? All right, and I just, again, I get the, it was my honor to sit in last year for a couple of meetings, and obviously want to extend all our appreciation to the board, but I also really want to emphasize the staff and all your hard work. Those, what seem like four-foot binders, I did say feet, not inches, that's a tremendous amount of work, and I just, you know, we're all throwing our back out when we're carrying it out of there, but that's just an amazing amount of work that you do, and just want to really acknowledge you for that. So, with that, we do have a record roll call. I'll call on the clerk. Thank you, Madam Chair. On the motion to adopt Resolution 1121-19109, Commissioners Vonck,
Yes.
Antor,
Yes.
Morgan,
Yes.
Jones,
Yes.
Vice Chair Steck,
Yes.
Commissioners Ponstein,
Yes.
Voorhees,
Yes.
Coleman,
Yes.
Brevi,
Yes.
Saulfeld,
Yes.
Sparks,
Yes.
Melton,
Yes.
Hennessy,
Yes.
Tallon,
Yes.
Bolkowski,
Abstain.
Womack,
Yes.
Wooden,
Yes.
Skaggs,
Yes.
Chair Bolter,
Yes.
Madam Chair, you have eighteen yays, zero nays, one abstention. The motion passes. Resolution 1121-19109 is adopted. Thank you, Madam Clerk. We're on to item 8E, and I'll call in Commissioner Sparks.
So, Madam Chair, I would like to, 1121-19109.
Support moved by Commissioner Sparks, support by Commissioner Jones. Questions or comments? Commissioner Tallon.
I was going to suggest Roger first because he's probably going to say similar things, which is, you know, just recognizing what a unique thing this is that Kent County does, that we take these dollars out of general, general fund. We've done it for a long time, and I so appreciate the willingness of the DHHS Board to take this on, to do this work for us, to help advise us on where these dollars can best be used in our community. So, thanks for that work.
Commissioner Morgan.
Very well stated, Commissioner Tallon. I just would like to add, I think this predates Commissioner Tallon and myself on this board. We've been doing this a while, and it's nice to see the county step up and step forward to meet some of these needs out of our general fund. So, this program's pretty unique, like Commissioner Tallon said, and I hope that we can keep this program in place in the future. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments on the resolution? Commissioner Wooden.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First of all, just echo the comments made by Commissioners Tallon and Morgan. I had one quick question about the process. If either Mr. Van Zetten or perhaps Ms. Jones might be able to answer. What is the review process when a grant has been issued? Is it print reviews mid-year and end year, or is there a site visit?
Bring Matthew up.
We get quarterly reports, excuse me, semi-annual reports for this one, from the providers to meet their outcomes. And if there's questions we have from those reports, we do follow-up work with that.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? All right, seeing none. This is a roll call. Madam Clerk, please call the roll. Thank you, Madam Chair. On the motion to adopt Resolution 1121-19110, Commissioners Vonck,
Yes.
Antor,
Yes.
Morgan,
Yes.
Jones,
Yes.
Vice Chair Steck,
Yes.
Commissioners Ponstein,
Yes.
Voorhees,
Yes.
Coleman,
Yes.
Brevi,
Yes.
Saulfeld,
Yes.
Sparks,
Yes.
Melton,
Yes.
Hennessy,
Yes.
Tallon,
Yes.
Bolkowski,
Yes.
Womack,
Yes.
Wooden,
Yes.
Skaggs,
Yes.
Chair Bolter,
Yes.
Madam Chair, you have nineteen yays, zero nays. The motion passes. Resolution 1121-19110 is adopted. Thank you, Madam Clerk. We are on to item nine, public comment related to any county matter. Any public comment today? Come on up. Welcome.
Good morning, Board.
Good morning.
Bruce McCoy, 2745 Birchcrest Drive. I'm current Chair for the DHS HHS Board, and I thank you for the comments to both of the Commissioners, all the Commissioners, and for the process. I could not sit back and just take it in as just the Board. I'd like to thank the county staff for the assistance and their wisdom and guidance for helping us through this process. And I thank you for allotting that dollar amount and these dollar amounts back into the community. So, my hat is off to you, and I thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you, and thank you for serving on that Board. Appreciate it. Commissioner Melton.
And he's going to offer how to put a kerchief in his pocket so neatly classes when we are done with our meeting.
Any other public comment today? All right, seeing none. We are on to item 10, Commissioner Reports. Any reports, Commissioner Jones?
Thank you, Chair. I have two. The first one is from the Supervisors Meeting. I'd like to thank our Drain Commissioner who came out, and he spent quite a bit of time with his staff on a day that technically he didn't have to work along with the staff to explain some of the drain code changes and make some suggestions for our local townships to investigate that a little bit further. Some are going to be mandated for the changes, some are optional. They're encouraging the optional ones to embrace the changes, so everything is consistent and making things move a little bit smoother and help out engineers. So, that was the first one. The second one, I don't bring up the Finance and Fiscal Resources Committee very often in a report, but I think this is worth noting and a good reminder to everyone on this Board that both legislative and finance are all recorded. So, as Commissioners, if you don't attend, you can actually watch it online. I highly recommend everyone take some time to watch what happened with item five on Tuesday, November 19th, which was the Fiscal Services Financial Status Report, and a lot of good bullet points were covered. So, I think one of the big highlights is that our fund balance presentation conforms to the requirements of GAZB 54. There's a whole list of items Steve went through, along with meeting our new addition, which I'm sure Chair Bolter was going to do at the end, so I won't steal her thunder. But I appreciate him taking, Steve taking his time and Jeff coming to introduce himself. So, that's something that I really want to encourage everybody to take a look at. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Tallon.
Thank you, Chair. The Grand Rapids Downtown Development Authority met last Wednesday. We had a pretty full agenda. Probably the item of most interest to y'all is a significant investment in updating that stark granite wall along the south end of Vandenberg Center, along Lion Street. I understand there's going to be some large chunks of granite available to those who would like them sometime in the future. But that wall is going to be replaced by much more pedestrian and people-friendly retail spaces, including a restaurant closer to Monroe. So, stay tuned. I think that work starts happening next spring. The other interesting thing is, following the DDA meeting, the DDA had its first semi-annual report to the community. This is an item that is required by new DDA legislation, changes to the DDA enabling legislation at state level. DDAs, in an attempt to increase transparency, not an issue we've had here, but has been an issue around the state, required to have these public meetings. No one from the public came, but that information is always available on the DDA website if you'd like to know all of the things that are going on there. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Steck.
Thank you, Chair Bolter. Three things. First, for Commissioner Jones to acknowledge, I did turn off the wings game in frustration and turned on your committee meeting, and it frankly was more rewarding. Second item, just briefly, let's hear regional entity negotiations with the state continue. They are now picking up intensity. We meet once a week. So, we continue to watch and hope for the best on that. And then, the third thing is, a number of you have asked about what's the status of the appointment process at the LHR, Legislative Human Resource Committee. We do have a number of positions that we reposted, and those will be open until the end of November, I believe. And then, once that closes, we'll finish up the last, the last of the interview processes and hopefully have these recommendations back by the meeting in December.
Commissioner Sparks.
Help me with cake in my mouth.
Sorry.
It's his fault. Thank you so much for bringing the cake today, Commissioner Ponstein. Chocolate. Costco yum. I have a few things to report, Commissioner Skaggs and Ms. Ghostin-Jones. We did meet with the Ready by Five Review Board this week for our second round of funding. So, I'm not sure exactly how many proposals we have in just yet, but there were twenty-one organizations that did attend the informational meeting. So, we're hoping to get information really soon as to how many proposals we have then to review. Also, Kentwood is very busy. We've got three grand openings just this week. So, we've got Chef Joseph Catering, Kellogg Community Credit Union opened, and Shoddy Wigs, which I'm a favorite of. I know, it's just kind of weird, like, why are you talking about Wigs? But it is economic development people, so I'm really excited about that. Small businesses are the hub and make things happen for us. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Commissioner Morgan.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have three reports, so if the Commissioner could bear with me a little bit, try not to bore you too badly. Things are happening at the Ford. We're doing the front door of, and finishing up the gateway transition. That was in two phases. If you get out there, you'll really start to see what that's going to look like as you walk into the terminal. And we also looked at the concourse expansion of adding like nine additional gates of about ninety-eight million dollars. We talked about a need for another parking structure, and I guess they're going to be attending the next Finance Committee meeting. So, if Commissioners can make it, that would be a real good meeting to, if you can't make it, at least view it on wherever you view it. And the, the big project with the apron wrapped up without ceremony, and so, we're able to replace that concrete that's been, been there since 1963. It just shows you how well we take care of things out at the airport with our maintenance division. I'm going to shift gears now to the 911 Authority Report. We are finishing up with tower placement and tower design, and as soon as we can get that in the queue, I think we're planning on testing the system either in the spring or in the fall, depending on coverage with foliage and stuff. So, it's been a long project and along with a lot of obstacles that we really didn't foresee, but it's starting to take shape. And the last one is, Wayman and I attended the proof, the last proof of concepts meeting for the proposed Convention Center Hotel. They are just getting all their data around and together, and they presented it. They're looking at now a five-hundred-room hotel facility, and I think the last cost that I'm aware of, and Wayman, correct me if I'm wrong, was like a hundred and eighty million dollars. So, we'll be waiting for them to verify and formulate and summarize that, and then I'll report back to you then.
Great. Thank you for doing all that work. Commissioner Skaggs.
Thank you, Chair. Just real quickly, want to say a few additional things to what Commissioner Sparks said about the Ready by Five Milage Proposal Review Board. We are meeting to review those proposals that came in on Tuesday during most of the week of December 9th through 13th. The, the proposals come in under three buckets. Home visits and healthy development is one. Number two is healthy and safe homes, and three is play and learn programming. So, those meetings are open, and if you wish to join us, we'll be over at the MVP workspace during that week of December 9th.
Great. Commissioner Bolkowski.
Thank you, Chair. Just a brief report that the Front of the Court Advisory Committee did meet at the beginning of the month. If you're interested to review its annual report or our annual report, it is on the website. It's just printed material, no video, so nothing exciting other than words. So, that's there at the Front of the Court website. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Brevi.
Thank you, Chair Bolter. I know many of you were invited, but just wanted to highlight the West Michigan Sports Commission. They recently had an open house for their new office, and it's at 300 Ottawa, so right across the street. And if you want to stop in there and say hi, they have a great space. And it's definitely a very useful space for them. They were partnered with Experian Grand Rapids, and both organizations were kind of bursting at the seams. So, it gives them a little bit more room to work and do the business of bringing people into Kent County. So, check it out, 300 Ottawa.
Commissioner Wooden.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a brief report, though we met previous to our, our last meeting, actually. The AAA Advisory Board, during our individual reports, Member Robert Dean, who is one of our appointees, noted that he will be stepping off that board. I asked a few folks, including the staff at AAA, how long he had served there, and everyone kind of shrugged but knew it was a very long time. And so, we did check, and the first time he was appointed was 1997. To my knowledge, I believe Commissioner Tallon was the only member at that time serving on this commission. And as such, I thought it would be appropriate to provide him a proclamation, very thankful to our Chair for approving this and for Commissioners Saulfeld and Hennessy for signing it with me, and just very thankful for the gentleman's service.
Great. Commissioner Tallon.
Thank you, Chair. Commissioner Bolkowski reminded me. I wanted to report just briefly that the Governor's Task Force on jails and pre-trial continues to meet. And one of the interesting opportunities that I had was to share the work of the Front of the Court Task Force and some of the impact that's having. There was a second annual report that recently came out. I shared it with the group, and one of the sheriffs wrote back and said, "Wow, this is amazing stuff. I want to give it to my folks and start using it in my county." So, I want to acknowledge that work, the impact that it could have to others in our state, and very grateful for that. Thank you.
Any other official reports before we move on to miscellaneous? All right, let's move on to miscellaneous. Commissioner Miscellaneous, Commissioner Brevi.
Thank you, Chair Bolter. Two brief things. First, we have the CHAC meeting this afternoon, Community Health Advisory Committee over at the Health Department, and lunch will be provided. So, join us starting at noon. Hear about some great topics. The second item I have is, on Monday, I was honored to attend the groundbreaking ceremony at the new Doug Meyer Innovation Center. So, it's over by the MSU Research Center, and it's just going to be an expansion to healthcare research in our community. And it's going to be part diagnostic, part therapy, and also research. So, I think we should all be really proud to have this in our community, and it's really important for Kent County, but also, you know, as a nation. It'll definitely affect our, our nation here with the opportunities that are available. So, thanks.
Thank you. Commissioner Melton.
Thank you, Chair Bolter. As we go into the week of Thanksgiving, I, it's kind of my favorite holiday because you can get together with family, but you don't have to do presents for because you can get together with family, but you don't have to do presents for everybody. Shows you how cheap I am. So I have two things that I would like to do, and I think one is long overdue as we come to almost her first year. And I just think that our Chairman, Mandy Bolter, deserves such a thank you. She is so involved. She's very approachable. She's way wiser than her age. And she looks for ways, though, to be part of what our Board does for the community, such as going to the senior millage. And I've seen you in so many other areas. She does have three very handsome men that she lives with at home, and maybe that's what helps her. But I just really, really am impressed. I'm energized. And I am just very much glad to be a part of a Board that has elected such a Chairman who is so involved. And I came across something by Ronald Reagan, and a quote, he said, "There is no limit to the amount of good you can do if you don't care who gets the credit." And Mandy, you just jumped out at me, so I really, really thank you for how you lead this Board. And that leads me to, when I talk with my sister in Oregon, which is very, very seldom, unfortunately, but she is constantly amazed. She lives in a wealthier part of Portland, Oregon, at how much we, as a commission Board, but that our county is involved in services in looking for ways to serve our county. Do we do it perfectly? Of course not. But is it always intentional, and are we always looking for ways? And I think that there's no doubt that it comes from our administration and works its way down. So I'm very, very grateful to be part of a group like this, and I'm just very thankful for you, Mandy. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Appreciate that. Commissioner Antor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is going to be a bit of a departure from all the good things we're doing here in Kent County, but I wanted to, which is usual for me, deer hunting is that time of year. And I wanted to thank our clerk, of all people, and her husband Brad. If you didn't catch it on the local news, it's been all over the national news. This is a time of year when big bucks will sometimes get together, and they do so to kind of figure out the pecking order, and sometimes they fight, sometimes they get away from each other, sometimes they don't. And our clerk, her husband, and a few other folks, they found two majestic whitetail bucks locked up, and they were going to either die from starvation, or they were going to drown there in a river, or they were going to be eaten by coyotes, which happens quite often, too. So anyhow, they jumped in, literally, Brad jumped in with a chainsaw and approached those deer, and he cut one of the main beams off and saved their lives. Now, they didn't have to do that. They could have harvested those animals because they're bow hunters in that family, which I appreciate very much. But that would violate fair chase standards, and they released them. And that actually caught on, and I know she's getting some inquiries from around the country because it was really a great act, and it shed really good light on hunters. Because like I say, those were two trophy bucks, and they could have harvested both of them, and they let them go. So thank you very much for that. I really do appreciate that very much.
Yeah, it was pretty awesome. Commissioner Ponstein.
Thank you, Chair Bolter. I know we talk about athletic teams a lot on this Board. There is one sport, it's called rugby. It's very rough, rough and tough, strong sport. I know the Granville High School has a boys' club rugby team. I hear they're very good, but I hear that the girls' team is even better, and they were crowned state champs a couple weeks past. I just want to acknowledge that. Also want to acknowledge, been in Lansing a lot, a lot of people have heard me be very critical of our legislatures, not only at the state level, but at the federal level, of just not being able just to talk to each other. I know as Commissioners, we get invites to everything. And if I'm invited to an event, I want to thank, you know, while I'm at it, Wayman to be a guest at the Econ Club, to hear Vincent Stanley, executive from Patagonia, speak, which was good. But I also got an invite from the West Michigan Sustainable Business Forum. And when I get invites, I don't weigh them politically, that, you know, if it's this or that, I'm not going to go. I kind of weigh it on my schedule, what the topic is, and what, if anything, I could add to the event. So when I got an invite from them to hear Aaron Mayer speak, who is a former and first African-American to ever be the CEO of the Sierra Club, I wasn't hesitant. I had the time available. Aaron Mayer actually asked me to meet with them afterwards in a very small group to discuss things that we may have in common. Now, there's not a lot I have in common politically with the Sierra Club, but there were things that we did talk about afterwards, mostly brownfield redevelopments and how that can be a tool to drive opportunities for the minority communities to start up businesses at a little cheaper rate. So, you know, wherever we are on the political scheme, there's always going to be common ground on some issues where we can work together. So I try to do that, and I know all the Commissioners try to do that, and we can't make every single event. And I get numerous, as all of you. So I just wanted to thank people who do extend invites to me. I can't make them all. So in that bipartisan spirit now, the bipartisan cake decorators at Costco Wholesale 784 reminded the Commissioner that he has not purchased a cake in quite some time. So you're all welcome to have that lovely Thanksgiving cake in the back, and there's plenty, I'm sure, for staff and the guests today. So I just want to wish everyone a very blessed Thanksgiving, which is next week already, and take time to spend it with family and friends.
Great. Thanks for the cake. Commissioner Womack.
Yes, I'd like to just congratulate two elected officials. I want to definitely congratulate our county clerk on a well oversight election that happened at the beginning of November, and that great sense Kent County will be watched by NBC, who will be here next year, as you've seen in the New York Times. I want to congratulate Commissioner Sparks also as the only elected official. I saw highlighted in a New York Times article about her pivotal race to office and how that plays into Kent County being one of the top five most influential races in the 2020 election. So I'm just glad our clerk has been doing such a good job since we're going to be on the national scene in 2020. On a sad note, we lost an officer in Detroit, and I know that's not in Kent County, but it is very close to home. And just remind everybody to keep our officers in their prayers. This officer was shot responding to what they thought was a home invasion, but turned out to be more of a domestic situation. So even when our officers are responding to help citizens or just giving out a traffic ticket, we never know when we could lose an officer. So just want to keep all our officers here in Kent County and all of our cities and townships in our prayers over the holiday season.
Thank you. Commissioner Bulkowski.
Thank you, Chair. Speaking of Thanksgiving, I would like to invite you all to join me next Monday evening. It's the 20th Annual Interfaith Thanksgiving Celebration. This year, it's returning to where it was in the first year, which is the Cathedral of St. Andrew. As our community continues to diversify, it also diversifies in expressions of faith. And so again, this is interfaith, and so the people of all faith expressions are invited to participate. It is a very powerful experience. And so again, that's 7:00 PM next Monday evening. Thank you.
Commissioner Sparks.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to invite everyone to join us on Saturday. The West Michigan Asian Association is having another in Kentwood at our Refugee Education Center. And we are going to have talks about immigration and refugees and how they assimilate here. So it's a very good informational piece, just in case you might have questions. So the Nepali, Burmese, and the Vietnamese communities are very strong there in Kentwood. So we'd like to invite you to come to that on Saturday, November 12th, from noon until 2:00, and free lunch will be served.
12th.
Sorry, November 23rd.
This Saturday.
This Saturday. Thank you.
Commissioner Steck.
Thank you, Chair. This past week, I had the honor of participating in the Grand Rapids Veterans Parade and Ceremony, and did so, and joined by some of my colleagues, Commissioner Vonck, Hennessy, Woodin, and Tallon, I believe, were there representing the county commission. So it was a great experience. It was probably one of the coldest hours I've spent in my life. But also one of the warmest in observing and watching some of our veterans being acknowledged for their service and their commitment after many years, still participating. It was a great experience.
Great. Any other Commissioner Miscellaneous? All right, I have a few things, sorry. Again, I want to acknowledge our clerk. It was a great election night, and we had some hiccups, per usual, in terms of getting ballots physically here and people passing out and various things. But you seemed to weather the storm, so awesome. Thank you so much. I want to, given today we're doing the budget, and it was, I do just so appreciate everyone's participation. I know it's a lot of our time. I really appreciate our Finance Chair, Commissioner Jones. She did a great job. And I just think it's just so important that we all understand what we're voting on, and I really just appreciate, you know, all of your efforts. And we were all very transparent. We communicated with each other on our goals, and I just want to thank you. And on that subject, we are losing our Fiscal Director, Steve Duarte. And we, to my chagrin, but I do want to acknowledge our, his replacement that we have hired, Jeff Doe. Jeff, would you stand, please? Jeff is going to be our new Fiscal Services Director, and we're just excited to have another, a new year with you next year and just welcome you to our team. So thank you for that. Quickly, too, we have been getting a lot of proclamation requests lately, so I did try to create some semblance of some guidelines that's available through the staff if you have questions. We're just trying to get the staff more, a little bit more time to put these together and make sure that we get everything we need. So if you do have a proclamation, I ask you to give the staff a couple weeks, and if you can get as much information as possible, that'd be great. We are going to have our public meeting next Tuesday to discuss our committee assignments and our leadership posts. That's going to be at 6:00 PM, so mark your calendars for that. And then lastly, we've gotten a lot of questions about the Lansing budget effort. I will tell you, our team here, our lobbyists, our, everybody I know has been kind of doing everything we know to do. I think Commissioner Skaggs can attest, he's there a lot. You know, we're all just kind of doing any and all things we can do, and we do have some very concerning cuts that are still in place right now. And so I would urge you to continue to contact our legislators on every side, our governor, anything and everything we can do to get those cuts restored. They're very, very key services. And I think we all would agree that since there's money there, we should not have to be fighting for this, but that's the predicament we're in. So with that, I will call Commissioner Woodin for a motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move that we adjourn, subject to the call of the Chair, to Thursday, December 5th, 2019, at 8:30 AM for an official meeting.
Moved by Commissioner Woodin. Support by Commissioner Sparks. All in favor, say aye. Aye. I'll oppose. We are adjourned.
I am Kent County. I am Kent County.
I am Kent County.
We are 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 Kent County.
I'm Kent County.
Somos Kent County.
Mas era Kent County.
We are Kent County.
We are Kent County.
We are Kent County. Oh, yeah.